To call to order the regular meeting agenda on January 8th, 2018. Excuse me, I'm on. We please join the mayor and the pledged allegiance in standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon our city. We know your word allows us to enter this brand-new season of 2018 to build upon the good news and victories of the past. We ask for your spiritual guidance in meeting new challenges and opportunities for our city. Open our hearts, minds, and eyes. Give us clarity and wisdom in meeting the needs of our citizens. And continue to strengthen our bridge of communication as a council with our communities and our city staff. Protect our troops and their families serving throughout the world. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, before we begin, Councilmember Osborne left work session because she's not feeling well. I think you all understand what's going around that virus. I guess they're considering the second flu, whatever. So anyway, could I hear a motion to excuse Councilman Osborne?
So moved.
I heard a second. So I heard the motion by Councilmember Laura Tano, member Colotano, and Councilman Pizzillo. So roll call.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries 6-0.
All right, so what we're going to do is we're going to take a break here. So I'm going to give you a 10-minute break before we begin the rest of the meeting. So this is for the 10-minute break, all right? Reconvene the meeting. We have one item on the communication. We were receiving information and recognizing the various community organizations and the city employees who participated in the 2017 Phil-A Need Program. Mario Salamando, executive manager, management assistant, presenting. Mario?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to take a few minutes tonight to share with you a little bit about the Phil-A Need Program and start with a quick video that aired on Fox 10 over the holidays. It was right after the committee delivered the donations to 50 Goodyear families. So Laney, could we roll the video, please?
It's this year, thanks to employees from the city of Goodyear. They teamed up to help deliver presents to families in need, including a family that recently fell on hard times. Stephanie Omo joins us now with their story, and it's a great story.
Oh, yes, it is. Christmas this year wasn't going to be the same for Patsy Salisbury and her family. Patsy is out of work due to an injury and is dealing with a death in the family, leaving her financially tight. The last thing they ever expected was a Christmas miracle. For Patsy Salisbury and her family, Christmas has turned a lot brighter this year.
You know, what happened with Christmas, it was just so overwhelming at a time when we were really hurting.
During a season of joy and happiness, the family found themselves in a very difficult situation. Patsy and her husband adopted and cares for five grandchildren. She's out of work due to injuries, and if things weren't already tough, Patsy just recently lost her father-in-law.
We explained to the kids that, you know, Christmas isn't going to be that great this year.
But that changed after Goodyear's Phil-A Need Program heard their story. They ended up being one of the family selected and were in for a big surprise.
The fire department gentlemen came in, they, you know, put the boxes down. They were so nice with the kids. They took them out to look at the truck.
The family received toys, gift cards, and boxes of food.
Just so nice and just overwhelming, you know, at a time when your family's going through hardship that, you know, your community really came through, and you don't ever expect anything like that. The kids are excited. We're all excited, and we just thank God that it was just a total blessing for our
Patsy says this experience has opened her eyes. She wants to find ways to give back to the community that has helped her so much. Reporting live in the studio, Stephanie Omo, Fox 10 News.
Could we go back? Yeah, that's, it was a very successful year, once again. The program this year served 50 families in the community, reaching 151 children. To date, Laney, could we go back to the presentation, please? Thank you. To date, the program has served over 600 families in Goodyear, about 1,800 children since it started about 15 years ago. And the program relies primarily on, relies on donations received by city employees, community businesses, and organizations. And it's really, the program has really changed since it started. It's really broadened into a program that, where there's a lot of different groups in the community really supporting the program. So this slide is a picture of those community partners that helped in 2017. As you see the list of supporters, it includes schools and businesses and hospitals and community groups. Each sponsors family or donates money or food or all of the above. So they've really taken on, it's really kind of developed into a program that really includes participation and support from a lot of different agencies and groups in our community. And lastly, let's see. It doesn't happen without the support of the Phil-A Need Committee. It's really the work of the Phil-A Need Committee. And I'd like to recognize those individuals tonight. Great representation citywide from different departments. Laney is really front and center on wrapping and working with volunteers to make sure that happens. Donna's on communications. Deanna Ortiz is out in front of shopping and coordinating those efforts. Lisa's working with CTCA. Tremendous support from Vice Mayor Campbell. Really great support working with All Faith and also the Valentine Family Foundation this year. And everybody has a different role and really pitches in to make this happen, and it's under the leadership of the executive sponsor, Chief Luizzi. Wait a minute. Oh, so it would be remiss of me if I did not thank city management and department directors for their support. They've been there every step of the way, in addition to the police and fire charities. They're also tremendous supporters. So it was a great program, great success in 2017, and we look forward to 2018.
Thank you very much. Any comment from council? Councilman Pizzillo?
Again, thanks to all that you have mentioned out there on that slide. To me, you know, the volunteerism that we have in this community, not just the citizens that pop up, but the, that step up, but the, also the employees themselves, says a lot about this community. You know, we're not just a collection of walls or neighborhoods. We are a true community. And anytime there's a need, there's always somebody stepping up. And again, bottom of my heart, grateful to all that you do, and I know you made a lot of Christmases out there that would have never happened without this effort. So again, thank you very much.
Well said. Anybody else? I think you said it all. We're going to, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Most, greatly appreciated. Thank you. All right, now is the time for a citizen who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
Does anybody in the audience want to speak? All right, then we'll go on to, would the city clerk please read consent agenda items, 6.1 to 6.4 by title only, please?
6.1, approved draft minutes of a regular meeting held on December 11th, 2017, a special meeting held on December 16th, 2017, a special meeting held on December 17th, 2017, and a special meeting and a regular meeting held on December 18th, 2017. 6.2, adopt the self-insured health care benefit trust agreement to set forth the terms of the health care benefit trust. 6.3, accept the dedication of a sidewalk easement from Goodyear Dialysis LLC. 6.4, adopt resolution number 2018-1851, extinguishing unused voter authorization for the issuance of bonds.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from Councilman Stip. Roll call vote, please. Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Good, let's go to the business section. And again, council, remind you, refrain from asking questions of the staff presentation or complaint motion on the table. At 7.1, on the business, is considered accepting a receipt of the 2016 and 2017 comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR, complete by Heinfeld Meach &amp; Company. PC for the city of Goodyear, finance manager Jared Askelson will present. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor Lord, members of the council. As was discussed in the title there, we're here to review the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2017. We refer to that as fiscal year 2017, beginning on July 1st and ending on June 30th. The item included some additional attachments other than just the, what we refer to as the CAFR, the comprehensive annual financial report. It also included a statement of auditing standards letter, along with a communication to governance letter, and a highway user revenue fund independent auditors report for the same fiscal year 2017. Tonight, we have Jill Shaw with us. After I finish my presentation, she'll come up and talk to you about some of the issues during the audit, some of the audit items, and we'll also talk to you about those letters as well. We also included the nine active CFDs have also annual financial reports that were completed for those. But tonight, what we'll be speaking about really is the city of Goodyear's overall CAFR. And other than being a great financial record for us to record the performance of fiscal year 2017, the reason why we complete an annual financial report is because it's required by state law. State law requires that we prepare these statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And who decides what's generally acceptable? Well, that's the government, governmental accounting standards board, also referred to as GASB. And also, it must be prepared or audited, these statements must be audited according to generally accepted auditing standards. And who decides that? The Comptroller General of the United States of America, who is Gene Dodaro. He is the head of the general accounting office for the federal government. He is the, I guess, the highest-ranking accountant in the land, and he decides what are generally accepted accounting or auditing standards. Generally, they fall back to the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants standards, which are used for most private entities. So in many ways, the auditing standards mirror those same standards. So the report is broken into three sections. The introductory section obviously comes first, includes the transmittal letter, any background information, including list of the officers, list of the elected officials, org chart, and also the certificate of achievement for financial, or financial reporting excellence that the city receives. Next up is the financial section, which I'll spend the bulk of this presentation going through. And finally, you have the statistical section that has information that satisfies GASB as far as some of the generally accepted items that need to be in the financial report, and also has items that satisfy information needed by bondholders. Within the, within the financial section, we have the independent auditors report. Again, Heinfeld Meach &amp; Company is the third-party independent auditor that prepared the audit this year. In that report, it outlines the responsibility, who's responsible for what. So management, city of Goodyear, is responsible for the preparation and presentation of the financial statements. The auditors are responsible for expressing opinion based on the audit that they perform. And in this case, they provide an opinion that we presented fairly in all respects the financial information. This is considered an unmodified or clean opinion. Additionally, they, within the report on internal controls, they identified no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So between that unmodified, clean opinion and the, the no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, this is considered a good audit. We did receive a management letter from our auditors outlining a few items that we need to work on in the next year. This includes within our disbursement, so our accounts payable or where we pay our bills, there's a couple items within our current financial system. First, vendor setup can be accomplished by the same person that more or less cuts a check. So we do have an internal process outside of the system in order to track who's setting up vendors and approving that, but the system itself does not stop that from occurring. Our new financial system will do that, but that will not be in place until we're in fiscal year 2019. Additionally, when you post a batch, if somebody goes in and edits information within that batch, the current system does not record the person that made that edit. So you don't know who made that change in our current system. The new system, again, in 2019, will fix that issue for us. Within the financial statements, we had errors within the inter-fund balances, grant revenues and capital assets that were identified during the preparation of the final financial statements for the year. These items should have been discovered earlier in the process, and through a more periodic review of financials on a more monthly and quarterly basis, we'll find these items going forward. Finally, we have an issue regarding inventory. Costs per units were not really in line with actual costs, so we're going to add a step into the inventory process for finance to review those costs per units in the future. Now, these are items that were presented to us by the auditors. These are not considered to be the material weaknesses that would show up in a financial report. However, these are items that we will be working on going forward. Some notable changes for fiscal year 2017. GASB statement number 77. In order to be compliant with generally accepted accounting principles, we had to add a note on our tax abatements, our government property lease excise tax, our foreign trade zones, and our sales tax development agreements. Those are included in note 18 of our book this year, a new item. Also, we have the ballpark fund. Previously, the stadium fund was located in the proprietary funds and business-type activities. It's been moved to the governmental funds and governmental activities, and we'll take a look at the effect of that in a couple of slides. So talking about the reports, the statements themselves, we kind of break these down into two categories. We have our government-wide financial statements, which are a broad overview of the finances across the entire organization. These are trying to mirror what's done in the, in the private sector as closely as possible. So if someone were to be picking up our financial statements and a private entity's financial statements, they would most likely try to compare them from the government-wide financial statements. Still not quite an apples-to-apples comparison, but it's really as close as you're going to get. These have a long-term focus, so these include both our long-term fixed assets that have lives 50 years or more, and our debt that may extend in 20 or more years as well. The main thing we look at in the government-wide financials is our total net position, and that total net position was $705.6 million, which was an increase of about $26 million over the previous year. And what is net position? It's defined as our assets plus our deferred outflows, less our liabilities and deferred inflows. And really what that means is everything that we own as a city, less everything that we owe as a city, is really what the net position is. Here's a little graph that shows us over the last few years how our net position has increased. You'll see from 2014 to 2015, you'll see a decrease in net position, but that actually is because in that fiscal year 2015, we had to include another GASB statement, statement 68, which, which we placed our, some of our pension liabilities on the face of our financials, because that's what's now generally accepted at that time. That's why you see when you're comparing it year over year, you're seeing that drop from 14 to 15, really because of that change that we made at that time. But you see for 2017, an increase of 3.9% over 2016. So that $26 million increase in our net position really comes down to two main things. An increase in our capital assets of $11 million, and a decrease in our outstanding debt of about $8 million. So that accounts for about $19 million of our $26 million increase in net position. What you'll see here, though, I broke it out also into the governmental and business activities. You see the governmental activities actually increased their capital assets by $120 million. Business type decreased by 109. That's due to the stadium fund shifting over to the ballpark fund and governmental activities. The assets associated with the former stadium fund have now moved into the governmental activities. Likewise, when you look at the outstanding debt, you see a similar picture. Business-type activities actually saw a decrease in their debt, because the debt was shifted for the stadium from business-type activities to governmental activities. So this is really where you're seeing most of that change of moving the stadium to the ballpark fund. The next group of reports we have are the fund financial statements. Fund is generally a grouping of accounts that's used to track resources. We have two categories. We have our proprietary funds, which include our water, wastewater, sanitation, and our fleet internal service fund. These statements within the fund financial statements look very similar to the government-wide statements. They, again, are focused on net position. However, in the governmental funds, we actually strip away some of those long-term, the long-term assets and liabilities, and there's a more near-term focus on spendable resources. And the focus here is on fund balance, and the key here is the general fund is located in the governmental funds. So one of the things we look at, obviously, is the fund balance. You'll see an increase of 17.3% from the previous year for our fund balance, and you see that we've had an increasing fund balance in the governmental funds over the last five years. The breakdown of those, the fund balance, though, you see, we have 109.8 total fund balance. Of that, 2.5% is non-spendable. Either it's an inventory item that we have in hand that we can't really spend, we will use that item, but we can't spend it. We also have some prepaid items, so some items perhaps like software, software contracts that we have, we may have prepaid those for multiple years. So it's not really a spendable item, but it is something that we have in our fund balance. It will be expensed in future years. Next, you have your restricted funds. So the restricted funds, a large portion of that is our development impact fee funds. We also have some capital funds located there. Our committed items are specific to the ballpark, the ballpark moving over from the governmental, or from the proprietary funds over the governmental funds. That's a new category here in the governmental funds associated with the ballpark and commitments we have there. Our assigned amounts are for our replacement reserves that we have set up. And finally, you have the unassigned fund balance, which really hasn't been used, hasn't been assigned for any other purpose, so it's, it's more or less what's been called unreserved fund balance in the past. And largely, that $53.3 million would be located in the general fund. Little note down below, you see that during the 2018 budget process, we identified using $46.9 million in the beginning balance in fiscal year 2018. Additionally, what we've taken a look at since we closed this year and finished off these financial statements, the assigned fund balance here of $9.3 million does not include about $3.5 million of our fleet reserve that would be considered assigned instead of unassigned. So really, we should be shifting about $3.5 million from unassigned to assigned, and when Lori comes and talks to you about the budget and the beginning fund balance, that'll be one of the items that'll be discussed. So in conclusion, unmodified opinion, clean opinion, that's great. We have no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. We have some items that were identified in our management letter that we'll be working on, and our financial position continues to improve.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Can I have a motion, a second, to receive the 2016-2017 comprehensive annual financial report completed by Heinfeld Meach &amp; Company, PC, for the city of Goodyear? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell and a second by Councilman Laura Tano. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo?
I appreciate all the effort that you put in on this as a member of the audit committee. We're very familiar with this review that's kind of before us right now, and I appreciate the idea, the areas that were identified and that you're working on, making sure that even though they're not material, that you're working to ensure that gets fixed for the next audit period. So again, good job.
Any other comments? All right, then, it's a discussion finished. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. 7.2 on business is consider adopting resolution number 2018-1853 and ordinance number 2018-1378 for wireless communication facilities. Our chief information officer, Alan Claypool, will present. Alan?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Today, we're going to talk about wireless communications, and what we're talking about when we say wireless is cellular communications, both the voice and the data. We're going to talk a little bit about the ordinance, the license agreement standards, and terms and conditions for the contracts. I'd like to thank at the front, there was a lot of work that went on in the valley and regional, and there were some folks here specifically I'd like to call out and say thank you before I begin, and that is Lisa, Joe, Luke, Katie, Byron, and Mario. They were a great help in putting all this together for us. On February 12th, there will be a further discussion on the fees that we'll touch on a little bit as we go through this. The whole purpose of this was to come together for our vendors and for our citizens and the businesses to streamline the effort to roll out this capability in our jurisdiction and to help with the mobile environment, to make it better for us as we're traveling One of the things that is in the state law that's a requirement is that we follow a permitting process, which we have. We use the dry utilities permitting process, but we have 75 days in order to process their permit so that they can start the build, and then they have to complete the build within 180 days. Our design guidelines manual does apply, and we're discussing this because they'll be located in the rights-of-way or public utility easements. There's some pretty pictures here. You'll note that these are not your mother and father's big wireless things that you see in yards and things like that. These are smaller. What they're designed to do, they're lower-powered, so they're designed to fill in the gaps in their maps where they have holes, where there isn't good coverage. It's not going to help voice as much as it's going to help data. As you're traveling around in your vehicle, or you're running a business or something, it's really going to help the, the data part of that. As I said, there was a large group in the valley, the state telecom group, that came together and said, let's make sure it's streamlined and kind of standardized throughout the valley. So we did that, and so ours is a derivative. Our ordinance and our license and our standard conditions are a derivative of that, so that it makes it as smooth as possible in the valley area for the providers. It became effective in March, and then in August, started the clock. We have six months to implement, which takes us into February, and that's why February 12th, we'll be talking about the fees. The ordinance covers several items. One of them is the clearances, stay away from this so many feet and so forth, the height, volume restrictions. Here's a few of the examples. It will show how we will measure the height of a pole, for example, on that left one and the, and the middle one. It will show volume. They're limited on the antenna to six cubic feet up on the pole, and that's actually pretty small. You can see some examples there in the pictures. And we'll, we'll limit them, just like the state law allows, to 10 feet above the sidewalk. Those are just examples of things that are in the ordinance. In the license and standard terms and conditions, it's non-exclusive. You've heard these terms before when I was up here talking about the fiber agreement. You'll see some similarities there. It's a 10-year agreement with one-year, 10, 10-year renew option. We will collect the permit fees, but they are capped at the $750 by the state law that was enacted. We'll follow existing process, the dry utilities, and of course, we'll hold them liable for any damages to the right-of-way. That ends my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, would the city clerk please breathe resolution? All right, will the city clerk please read Resolution Number twenty-two, twenty eighteen dash one eight five three by Titleoni?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018 dash eighteen fifty-three, declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled Article Twenty-two dash three, Wireless Providers, Use of Public Right-of-Way, Wireless Provider Right-of-Way License Agreement and Wireless Facility Standard Terms and Conditions.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
She'll move.
Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell, a second by Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. Anybody on this side? Yes, Councilman Stip.
This is not the same thing as putting up this for the public, for the, as putting up a, an antenna. These are little mini boosters, if you will, throughout the community. So these don't have to come before the council for approval or anything like that. It's all handled administratively.
Mayor and Council, correct. So they'll go through the dry utilities permitting process. There'll be a license that all reviewed to make sure that they're in line with what our terms and conditions are. They'll sign the terms and conditions. It is placed up on a poll to reference your question there, and there will be communication lines either run via fiber or they'll do a microwave shot off of it.
Okay, but this isn't your typical cell tower, get approval. I just want to make sure that the public was absolutely clear on that, so.
Very different size.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries six oh.
Thank you. Will the city clerk please read Ordinance Number 2018 thirteen seventy-eight by Titleoni?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2018 dash thirteen seventy-eight, amending Chapter Twenty-two of the Goodyear City Code, Telecommunications and Fiber Optic Cable Communication Systems, to add Article Twenty-two dash three, Wireless Providers Use of Public Right-of-Way, approving forms of Wireless Provider Right-of-Way License Agreements between the City of Goodyear and wireless providers for the use of city right-of-way property to operate a wireless network. The Wireless Communications Facility Standard Terms and Conditions, and authorizing the city manager or designee to negotiate and execute such license agreements, and authorizing the Director of Engineering to issue, issue small wireless facility site permits, and providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances and severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
So, second.
A motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Councilman Laura Tano. Open for council discussion. No discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries six oh.
Great, let's go on to seven point three on business. It's consider adopting Resolution 2018 dash eighteen fifty for the adoption of the 2018 City of Goodyear Legislative Agenda.
Thank you.
Robert Boer, Government Relations Manager, will be presenting. Robert? Rob?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's that time of year again. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to present the 2018 State and Federal Legislative Agenda. I think most of you have grown familiar with this process by now over the years, but I'll just do a quick recap and, and go through some of the, a little bit of a recap of last year's session, and I'll look ahead to both the state and federal session for this year, and then, of course, going through the guiding principles that, that we have approved the past several years. The, the legislative agenda is intended to provide guiding principles that we do follow when we analyze legislation with and its potential effects on local government, specifically, obviously, Goodyear. It provides staff, it provides us with direction related to the legislation as it's introduced. But if something does, something specific does fall outside of, of those guiding principles, assuming that you approve those tonight, of course, if that legislation is deemed significant and something that we feel that we need some further direction on, we can take those back, we can take that back to you to get direction on those, those specific issues. So for the past several weeks, we've already been receiving quite a bit of, of legislation draft proposals for the upcoming session, and usually, as we receive those, we tend to share them with the development directors for the appropriate departments and give feedback and, and analyze how, what they mean to the City of Goodyear. And, and as, so throughout the session, we'll continue, especially beginning tomorrow, with, with, you know, today being the opening of session, beginning tomorrow, we'll, we'll start receiving tons of bills each and every day, and, and that's what we'll be doing for a while, is analyzing each of those and, and what they mean to the city, city government in general, but, but obviously, here, we'll, we'll be analyzing what it could mean to Goodyear specifically. And then each Friday, as, as many of you probably know, I, I go down to the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and meet with the government relations folks from all the other area cities and, and really kind of put our heads together and, and, you know, with our individual analysis, kind of do more of a collective analysis and strategize as far as what, what the legislation means and really what we can do together, you know, as a group to, to best work with the legislators to either advocate for or behalf of, of the given legislation, depending on, on what it means to us as a city. And as, as I do those, as, as I do that throughout the session, one of the main, main goals of mine will be to continually update all of you on that legislation and as it proceeds through the, through the process, and, and let you know what's out there, what it could mean to us, and, and what we're doing about it. And of course, it sometimes may ask for your support in helping to reach out to our legislators and, and help deliver a message, whether it's supportive of, of a given piece of legislation or whether it's helping to deliver that message as to how it could, could harm our cities. So with that said, communication, of course, is, is really a, a two-way street, I guess even more than that. I mean, as much as I, I want to make sure and keep you informed, I would just ask that if you can just do the same with me and keep me informed and, you know, let me know of anything, anything you hear, as well as any conversations you have or anything you're attending, where you, where you have contact with a legislator or somebody related to any piece of legislation, and any information you can provide or, or just letting me know of questions you were asked or anything like that. Several reasons, obviously, one is just to stay, help me stay informed, but then also along those lines would be, you know, when we talk about these weekly meetings we have and, and the strategizing and, and all of the messages that, that we're kind of balancing and the, and the balls that we're juggling, it, it can often be very important that we're all keeping a consistent message that might not be the one that, that seems like it would be on the surface. So, so it's just very important that kind of, for me to stay engaged on, on those conversations that are happening. And then, in addition to the communication between Mayor and Council and myself, another, another initiative that we have been really taking seriously in the last couple of years and want to continue to do is, is that engagement with our residents and the, the communication with them. And, and we do that through a few different ways, but one of which, our Government Relations website, we provide information about how to find out who their legislators are and how to contact them. We also provide some information about things like state shared revenue and why those are important to cities, and as well as just kind of some high-level issues that, that are created through legislation and, and could be affected by legislation, just to provide them with some of that base knowledge. And then, as issues come up, as significant, you know, depending on their significance, we can always engage them more through the website. But then, the other thing that we've really been doing is more in-person engagement. As you know, last year, we started the Leadership and Enrichment Development Program, the LEED Program. And tomorrow, we actually, tomorrow night, we begin year two of the LEED Program. So tomorrow night, I'll be going to LEED, and the first session is a government overview session where we have the city manager, or in this case, the interim city manager, come and do a introduction to city government, but then we also do an introduction to government, kind of how city government falls in with the other levels of government, and explain some of the legislative process. And we will definitely continue to engage those folks and also look at additional opportunities, whether it's with our LEED alumni or, or maybe a elective class with the LEED Program, where they'll be able to do even more engagement with, with our legislators. And then, some of you know, in late September, we had a town hall with our Legislative District Four members, which resulted in a visit to the Capitol just a few weeks ago, our last month. And Senator Otondo actually, so after the town hall, we had several residents sign up, and Senator Otondo actually did a great lengthy overview of the process and walked us around the Capitol and really informed these residents as, as to how all of this works. And we'll definitely continue to find opportunities like that to engage our residents and make sure that they are willing and able to engage when, when needed on a, on an important issue. So just a quick recap of, of last year's session. It went one hundred and twenty-two days. We saw a total of three hundred and fifty-three bills signed into law by the governor. Just to touch on a few quick pieces of legislation, obviously, you've received some summaries with, with additional information, but just a few that, that do affect us both positively and negatively. We were able to get reauthorization of our military reuse zone, so we're extremely grateful for the, the folks down there that they supported us with that. We did get a, an additional ten-year authorization of the military reuse zone, so, so we'll be able to continually use that as an economic development tool to attract businesses to our community. Another change was related to Community Facilities Districts, or CFDs, as you've all come to know them. There, there was several, there was a piece of legislation that made several changes. Probably the most significant to you all would be if we did have a future CFD that was created, there would be two board members that would be private members that would be appointed by the largest landowner within the Community Facilities District. In addition to that, it did some other things like capping the application fee, putting a time limit on the review between the application and the, and the public hearing, ma- making us provide, making sure that we provide certain information on the city website to those folks that are within the CFD and that sort of thing. And then, just one other one I'll touch on, and, and very briefly, since you just, just witnessed some of the changes from, from Alan, who is up here with the ordinance, but that was the small cell legislation that he talked about. Obviously, the, the legislation was created to allow wireless carriers to install, operate, and maintain small cell equipment to, to better, better be able to have that, that wireless capabilities within the community. You approve those changes tonight, but you'll also see, as, as Alan mentioned, the fee changes that will be coming forward next month. And then, just a look ahead to this session that, that convened today, as Governor Ducey provided his stated state address earlier this afternoon. From nearly all accounts, the, the upcoming session looks to be a, a pretty brief one with, with it being an election year. It sounds like everyone's kind of on the same page that they're going to get out of there pretty quickly. Two areas of, of focus that, that we've been hearing pretty consistently have been education and water. Since, since last session here in Goodyear, we've actually experienced some changes in our two legislative districts. In Legislative District Four, late last summer, we had Jesus Rebocava resigned from the House, and the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors then appointed Dr. Geraldine Peaton to serve in that, in the House seat. So she, so this will be her first session in LD four. And then, of course, in LD thirteen, Senator Steve Montenegro resigned recently to put himself in, in contention for the Congressional District Eight seat that Trent Franks recently resigned from. And, and then, just last week, the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors met and appointed Sina Kerr to that, to that position in LD thirteen. You know, with it being the second, second session of the Fifty-third Legislature, the leadership all remains the same. We'll continue to see Steve Yarborough as the Senate President and J.D. Meznard as the Speaker of the House. And then, just to get into the guiding principles, and I'll, I'll cover these quickly as, as they tend to be similar as, as previous years, but just to touch on a, a few of these, fiscal sustainability, obviously, continues to be a huge effort among us, is to make sure that, that there isn't legislation that, that impacts our bottom line, really one of the most important things, obviously. Last year, we did change the language of this guiding principle to include the protection of any dedicated funding stream and sources that could directly or indirectly affect local government. Obviously, one of the main things that we think about when, when we look at fiscal sustainability is state shared revenues. We all know the importance of state shared revenues to cities and towns, and we know that not this last session, but the session before, there was a, a bill passed, Senate Bill fourteen eighty-seven, that actually probably falls under a lot of these guiding principles, but, but it does threaten state shared revenues and, and, you know, continues to provide that, that balance between the state and how they can impact our state shared revenues. And as you've probably seen, it continues to affect cities. In the last couple of weeks, Tempe now has been issued a violation of SB fourteen eighty-seven for their use of, of Jeeplet in, in their community. So that's one we'll see, we'll see how the Attorney General finds, finds that case in the coming weeks and, and what happens with that. That will likely, or Senate Bill fourteen eighty-seven and, and the effects from it will continue to be a discussion throughout the session among, among the cities and what and how we want to deal with it and, and, you know, what the state is looking at as well, and, and what they're willing to do related to, related to SB fourteen eighty-seven. And then, obviously, construction sales tax is one we've talked about in the past, and I know I've sent you quite a few messages related to that. There was some legislation and a lot of discussion last year and probably even the year before about changes to construction sales tax and, and how that's collected. There hasn't been anything done to change it yet legislatively, but, but there continues to be those discussions, and we do expect that, that there will probably ramp up again this year. The League, over a year ago now, did form a Construction Sales Task Tax, Task Force. One of those who sat on the task force was Doug Sandstrom, our, our Finance Director, and they met periodically for well over a year, did tons of research and analysis about what all other states do related to construction sales tax, and really came to a cohesive decision or, or really provided guidelines as far as, you know, even though there was differing opinions among the many cities that, that served on the task force, we really came to kind of those, those guiding principles, to steal the term from my Legislative Agenda, that we, that we all agreed on and, and that we need, know that we can't give in on as we enter negotiations and discussions related to construction sales tax. So I think that task force will provide a, a huge, great starting point for cities and, and will be a huge benefit as we, as we discuss construction sales tax. Local authority, obviously, we would just oppose any legislation that, that preempts cities and towns from being able to, to take any action or, or do those things that, that we see as our, as our responsibilities, the local government. Last year, it, for example, at the last minute of the session, there was legislation introduced and, and then subsequently passed that forced cities, if, if they want to increase any TPT, any sales tax, it must go to an election, and that election must be in the fall of an even-numbered year. So in consolidated election date, for instance, just one example of many of legislation that, you know, either forces our hand, tells us the way we have to do something, or, or really takes away our ability to do something. Economic development, as discussed last year, we were able to preserve and extend the authority of our military, our military reauthorization, our military reuse zone, and then also mentioned Jeeplet, which continues to be in the headlines. That was one that, that there was significant challenges to that last year. There were some changes that were made legislatively. So continue to protect those tools as well as explore other tools that might be able to be created through the state to help cities be able to, to engage in more economic development opportunities. Transportation, there was some restoration made of, of HERF, Highway User Revenue Fees, which is a, which is a good accomplishment, but we still have more to go. So we'll continue to work towards the protection of those revenues and, and make sure that, you know, those, those funds aren't offset to cover other state obligations like they have been in the past. And then, water. Water, as I mentioned earlier, is going to be kind of one of those key efforts this year at the legislature. It's actually was mentioned today by, by the governor in his stated state, and it's been, been an ongoing discussion. Actually, the governor created a group called the Governor's Water Discussion to, to look at changes that are necessary. changes that are necessary related to water, making sure that we have one authority over water and kind of guiding, you know, the different decisions and the decision-making authorities that can best manage the control of water in the future. So that's definitely something that's going to be key this session. Water is a little bit of a different animal when it comes to how we work with it. Obviously, we, as a city, belong to the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association, so as we, as we kind of work with the other cities and the League on most of this legislation, water, the League tends to kind of stay out of a little bit because knowing that AMO is there and AMO has its own contract lobbyist, Barry Aaron's. So we work as a group with him, and actually, we've had several meetings already to discuss potential legislation coming from this Governor's Group and what it might look like and kind of, you know, what our reactions to those things are. As Councilmember Osborne, who's our AMO representative, has also stayed in tune with, and the language has not yet been introduced, but we'll obviously be seeing some comprehensive legislation related to water in the near future. So then, quickly to touch on federal government, obviously, there's been some changes lately and more changes to come, but we have entered the second session of the 115th U.S. Congress. In Congressional District Eight, as I mentioned earlier, Trent Franks recently resigned, and there's obviously quite a few people now who have put themselves in contention for that seat. Obviously, also, Senator Flake has announced he will not be seeking reelection, and there's some other potential congressional changes to come. Obviously, also, Senator McCain's health and also, obviously, we will be looking at his future, you know, and one change related to his service as well will be him coming off of the Senate Armed Services, where he served as Chair for a long time and been an important, important voice for us here in Arizona with Luke Air Force Base. With both his uncertain future and term limits of chairmanships, he'll be coming off of that position, and Senator Jim Imhoff from Oklahoma will be the next Chair. And then, as many of you, as all of you probably know, with the recent election in Alabama, the Senate makeup, the U.S. Senate, is now 51 to 49, so it has tightened up there in favor of the Republicans with Doug Moore, Doug Jones being elected in Oklahoma, in Alabama, sorry. So a few, just to touch on some recent federal legislation, obviously, the most recent would be the tax reform. Would be the tax reform bill that just passed recently. Wouldn't even try to begin to summarize it or pretend like I could tonight, but just a few things, I mean, it obviously eliminated the Affordable Care Act mandate. Single joint filers are going to see a change in their tax bracket percentages. Most cases, it's going to be lower. And then, the bill is, and also, corporate tax rate dropped 21%, but the bill is expected by the research experts to add nearly a billion dollars to the federal deficits. As far as its direct effect on cities, the good news with the tax reform package is there was a lot of question about some changes to bond financing and interest related to bonding, and it could have had somewhat of a significant effect on some of our cities. That did not end up in the final form of the bill, so we won't be dealing with that negative effect in our financing capabilities. And then, another, just as far as a couple upcoming priorities, as you probably know, Congress did approve a third continuing resolution to keep appropriations going. As of now, the government is funded through January 19th. So obviously, first and foremost, among all other things, they're going to be looking to pass a budget by January 19th. So that's probably what we're going to, that's the discussion that we're going to hear more and more coming in the near, in the coming weeks, for sure. And then, just one other priority that's out there is a infrastructure package. Infrastructure and transportation is one thing that the federal government definitely wants to do. Obviously, with the cost of the tax reform, or at least the potential cost of the tax reform package, it's going to make it difficult to do a lot with infrastructure, but, and there hasn't been a lot of details put out there yet, but from what we are hearing, it sounds like it's going to really stress private, the inclusion of the private sector in any kind of infrastructure, as well as maybe the inclusion of asking more from local government. So obviously, there could be an effect to us there, but definitely more P3-type partnerships. So then, quickly, just to run through the guiding principles from the federal level, again, similar to what you've seen last, or in years past, so we can run through quickly, and you also have your attachment that provides more information about the different principles. As far as transportation and infrastructure, I really touched on that already, kind of waiting to see what that package could look like, and if there's really, if there's really the ambition to move that with just passing the tax reform package and the potential costs there. Economic development opportunities, we continue to explore those with the federal government. I know many of you have relationships with Senate and Congressional staff, and I know many of you have heard about, heard John McCain, Senator McCain, talk about his legacy project, the Rio Salado Project, along the Riverway, which could obviously be an economic development project for all of us cities in the future. We also have developed some key relationships with some key Congressional staff and are having some conversations about some other opportunities related to economic development and involving our Economic Development Office and hope that we have some exciting opportunities or some new activity that we might be able to take on in the near future. Marketplace fairness, this one's a little bit more specific than most of the guiding principles that you're looking at tonight, and the reason for that is because in 2014, of course, you passed a resolution specifically supporting marketplace fairness-related legislation. So that would grant sales, grant states the authority to require out-of-state online and catalog retailers to collect sales tax at the time of transaction like a local retailer would, which, obviously, you have all been familiar with that, and we've had some of those conversations in DC about the importance of that, of that legislation. Some good news and bad news with that, there seemed to be really stalled for a while, but there has been, there has been seemingly some additional support from both, both sides of bipartisan support for this type of legislation. I guess the bad news tied to that would be one of those that we were really engaged in some of those conversations with had been Congressman Franks' office, and who obviously is no longer there. And then also, with the current atmosphere in Congress, it really just seems that bills that are deemed essential are really only those that are getting a vote or under consideration at this point. Water, obviously, we recognize the needs of Goodyear going forward and continue to explore any opportunities out there, not just statewide, but federally, as far as anything that might be able to help us with those needs in the future. Military preservation, obviously, we have a contract with all of the other West Valley Cities and Phoenix and the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors, called the West Valley Partners, where we work with a consultant firm in DC to really keep us informed and manage any issues related to the military that come up. Obviously, we continue to lead the world in F-35 training, and we want to continue to manage that and make sure we protect that mission. And then, grants and aviation, continue to work with all city departments to look at priorities and seek funding for grants and aviation, you know, where we're not only with the federal government, but obviously, the City of Phoenix to maintain operations and make sure if anything comes up related to airports that we're able to stay involved. So that is my presentation. Before I go, I just want to thank all of you for always being great to work with in this arena and staying engaged and, you know, encourage you to always ask me questions or let, again, you know, let me know if you're hearing things out there. I always appreciate those things, and it only helps me to do my job when I know kind of what's being said out there and what's going on, so. Just want to keep, you know, reiterate my commitment to keep open communication amongst all of us and keep you guys all informed and updated regularly as things happen, not just at the state level, but also federally. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions related to the 2018 Legislative Agenda.
Thank you, Rob. Are there speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2018-1850 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1850, adopting a 2018 state and federal legislative agenda and providing authorization to city manager and his designee to take action.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton and a second by Vice Mayor Campbell. Open for council discussion. Councilwoman Stip?
I hate to make this any longer, but, Rob, you talked about citizen involvement in the legislative process, and you talked about using the LEED graduates, to which we've had one class and we've got another class starting tomorrow. What is our strategy in kind of a citizen call to action, where we would put it out via Twitter, Facebook, not making people look for it on the website, but actively engage? What's our strategy on that?
Mayor, Councilmember Stip, well, I think, for one, I think it's important that we're careful and selective. I think, I think we don't want to get ahead and sometimes don't want to put the cart before the horse, so I do think that it's really important that we are selective in those issues where we do really ask for that engagement. But when it does come to that, which is entirely possible, that there is an issue that gets to the point where we absolutely want to, want our citizens to start making that call and engage them as much as possible, I think, obviously, the LEED program is more kind of a long-term, like I think you were alluding to, where you're building that, building that database sort of slowly over the years. But as you also mentioned, I think, I think if it came to that, that point where we really needed that engagement at a quick level would be more of that social media contact, where we're reaching out that way and then directing them with a link to the website. And then also, we have our neighborhood news alerts that Christine Plin manages out of Neighborhood Services. Similarly, she can send out those messages with a link and direct them to that information that we need them, need them to get to.
You had a second part to it? Go ahead.
So, I'm, I don't want to be argumentative, so I'm just going to plan it, say it this way in the form of a question. Can we get from you or the staff a strategy of when we will do that? Not just a, well, if we need to, we've, we're going to adopt a resolution with our, with our goals and our guiding principles, and we're just going to leave it up to chance for the rest of it? And I think if we're going to rely on the seven of us to make phone calls to Legislature and representatives that really don't care what we think, but will listen to the residents, I think we need to have a firm strategy on that. The whole process, I'm thrilled by the feedback and the connections that we've made with LD4 has been astonishing and have been absolutely remarkable. And I know that if any of the seven of us reached out to our LD4 reps, that they would listen. I can't say the same, with the same level of enthusiasm that that would occur in LD13. And I realize we need to be very careful, but this Legislature has already proven itself to be one that will attack the cities at any moment, and I think we need to be prepared to respond to that in not just seven phone calls, but 700 or 7,000, or, you know, I would love 70,000 phone calls from people that they're representing in a direction that they're headed that we don't think is good for them as residents. They represent all of us, not just the party that they're at, and I'm sorry to soapbox on this, but what I've seen this spring so far is scaring the daylights out of me as an independent, and I think we've got to, we've got to have a clear strategy of when we're going to employ that, and that's all I'm asking for.
I'm going to interject here as the mayor before you answer that. I can understand where you're coming from, Councilwoman Stip, because it is scary, but there is a fine line on how we handle relationships. And we have, at the Legislature right now, they want us to be partisan, so they don't want us to be nonpartisan on the council. It's before them now. They want us to either say we're Republican, Democrat, and as the group that's, you know, sponsoring this and want this, they don't understand, because they don't have to do this. They don't understand that 80,000 people in our city have needs, and our job is to bring it together and try to meet those needs in a way that progresses our city. So we say all the time, don't care. I am one of the parties, but you know what? I don't base my decisions for this city on the party. And so I think that's where, where we have to be really careful as we handle them, because they can, if we, if we've come out with a program that is so strong like that, we're going to get some repercussions. So we do have to be smart in what we're doing. And I will tell you that I belong to a group of mayors, so I think it's Scottsdale and it's Tempe and who else is Phoenix. We work with the businesses, so we have found that when we have problems, and they brief us on it, we bring this group together and we actually go talk to CEOs, and we try to get the support of people who have a lot of influence. So I think we have to work, I agree to this extent, but I think it has to be, we have to be very careful in how we do it and not make any mistakes. Now, I'll let you comment.
Let me, I'll just respond to that real quick, because that was the, that's what I, we can't do it emotionally from the dais.
Yeah.
And I'm asking for a strategy.
Sure.
That you guys figure out, what does that look like? At what point do we want to engage? And if we have that as a written strategy, then that answers my question.
Right. And then, when we do engage, I want you to know that that means you have to take the time to get engaged.
Correct.
I can't be, I can't make that meeting, I can't go there because I got this, because we have to work on their schedule on the Legislature. So when you say this, you're making a commitment, you got to follow through with it. Not that I don't think you can follow through, but you, everybody is busy and has their own.
Mayor and Council, if I can just jump in real quick, because there is one other very important point related to this that I haven't made, and that's, and that's really, a lot of these messages, we, it has, well, basically, all of these messages has to be very information-based. So we can direct our residents to information, but we really can't be, it really can't be biased in one direction. So, I mean, there's always that balance between politics and campaigning and, you know, government dollars, so whereas, I know a couple of years ago, we had this issue where we did make a campaign on the website, and it really has to be providing all the facts, which, I mean, obviously, if you clearly provide the facts and, you know, direct them to see those facts, you hope that they come to that conclusion that we feel is the logical one, but we do have to be careful with those messages and not, not really gear them one way or the other, or make it appear as we're gearing them one way or the other. We do have to be.
So our new course is Lean? I always have the wrong name for it.
Lead, yeah.
So, so do we, when we bring those, you know, residents in, how long is the program? Is it eight weeks or?
Twelve weeks.
Twelve-week program.
With graduation and everything.
Do we educate them on that part of it? So there would be, there would be a power bill to build the group is from our course, our Lean course.
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor and Council. And we've made that commitment to them, that we'll continue to find ways to keep them educated and engaged, and a lot of them asked, in fact, when we took the group down to the Capitol, they asked us to let them know if there's any issues that they can help by engaging in down at the Capitol. But like I said before, I mean, it's, we do have to be, you know, we sit in these weekly meetings and we really do commit to a certain strategy and a certain message, and sometimes that changes, and sometimes it changes quickly. So we do have to be selective and careful, not that, I mean, there absolutely will come that time where we want to engage, and, you know, that's also why I have been selective.
Negotiation, and when you have negotiation, you have to keep some doors open. And I know what you're passionate about, and I know some cities have really put themselves out there, Tempe's one of them, but not disagreeing with you, Bill, but I'm saying we need to walk this path carefully and strategically. Sherry?
I guess one thing I would like to see, first of all, I think with the change in LD13, we might see a little bit more favorable, because I'm very, I think we do very great, like Councilmember Stip said, with LD4. If we have a question, I know there was the drone issue, they looked into it. We used to do the dinners, I think we need to have that contact back with LD13 as well, so maybe if we could do one of those again, meet. So maybe if we could do one of those again, meet and greets with everybody, I, I think that would be great since we do have a new person there and I think they need, need to know what our concerns are. I'm sure you've already reached out to her, but I think that would be great. I would also like to see, because I think we do need to build a database faster and I, I agree, we have to be careful how we use it. But with all these, Senator Antono gave some really good information. If we could get some of that information out in our, in focus, some of that out in each of those neighborhood informations with a link on how they sign up, and, and then they can leave comments. And then we can, as you get through, then you can send the, the email blast out when it's appropriate and they will have already signed up. Because the LEED program is a great program, but it is going to be small and it takes a while to build it. But if we can send that information and say, this is where in focus you can send out, this is where, you know, on your neighborhood information, you can sign up to make your comments known. And I think we might get a broader database so when the time comes, if there is something we can say, this is going through the legislature, this is how it affects the cities if it passes, and then send that out. And I'm just being very general because I, I understand what you're saying with how the league works and everything. But if we just start getting out people signed up.
I think that's a great idea because it makes them feel like they're really a part of the process, just learning how to do that. You know, people were having trouble at the beginning on the computer to, to register. And once they're registered, then they feel part of the team. And then they would have people that we could be talking to, so.
Mayor, Councilmember Lortano, I think that's a fantastic suggestion. I, you know, we have the information available on our website, but if we start directing that, like you said, out in the infocus and those neighborhood messages with links and getting those people to those tools where they can sign up and, and be ready to make their, put their voice out there when, and then, and then like I said, you know, providing those facts and directing them to those facts when an issue comes up so they can kind of take it upon themselves to go out and, and make their voices heard. That's fantastic.
Yeah, because I think when you look at the website, you have to hunt for it, which is hard. And I think if it comes on your blaster on your phone, you're going to say, oh yeah, I'm signing up for that.
And remember, the voices we want to hear is the voice of the public. We don't want to hear it's a Republican and a Democrat. We want to hear that it is a voice of the majority of the people and for their quality of life. Brennan?
Yeah, and I agree. I mean, however we go about it, just to Bill's point, just a strategy, either, either way, however, at what point are we going to break the glass and, and even reach out to our, our legislative advocates or whatever we're going to call them or people that are going to possibly help us or, or advocate for us out on different issues? So, so yeah, the strategy would be great. And then how we get, build that base of people that we can reach out to is other, other ways we can do it too.
Because you reach out to with information, you can make, they can make their own decision on it.
Yeah.
And then you gather the people that are where you want them to be and you get them working for you, so. Any other, yes. Joe?
You know, the league does a great job of letting us know what's going on down there. Where the shortfall is, is their constituents, which are our constituents, really unless they're really finely tuned into this, they, they don't know what that impact would be. I'm hoping we come up with a strategy to ensure, and again, not sliding one way or the other, but to let people know whether it's a listing, you know, like Councilmember Lortano was mentioning about, is a way to let them know, say for example, they pass a bill in which not that long ago, there was something that eliminated the apartment rent, which would have been 2.5 million over time. If that would have passed, it would have been nice if we had had at least the citizens in advance to know that if this happens, here's some potential impacts that may be to the direct services that you may get, even though it's not an issue within, but it's an issue for us. Once it's passed, it's too late. So from a strategy standpoint, we need to know or be, be able to get information out to just let them know that, you know, if this passes, you know, here are some potential possibilities and here are your legislators, you might, if you're interested in letting them know of what you think about this. And to build that database would be great. But again, what they hear from us doesn't carry the weight as if they hear from hundreds or thousands of other people, so.
So I guess it's the process they want to see, just a little bit more process to how.
Yeah, and Mayor and council, I'm happy to do that. I, I guess my only point is it, it has some flexibility as far as what issue would trigger it and when that issue would trigger it because there's a lot of variables at play in. But I, but I love the idea of creating a strategy to, to get the message out there further and get those tools out there further and then get the facts out there further so they know how to, how to access those things when, when they do see those facts. Absolutely.
Because I can tell you from my experience and some of the things that I got involved in, it just turned them off a little bit. So it's a fine line that you ride with these representatives. And so I know you say this, but we got to the point, they didn't come to the table on anything, so, so we'll have to be careful. So, all right. So are we, what are we, where are we? Because I'm all lost in conversation. Are we voting here? Are we done with the vote?
Ready for the vote.
Pardon me?
Ready for the vote, yeah.
Oh, thank you very much. Ari Brocall, vote please.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Just, let's go on to information items. Any council have comments or commendation reports? Vice Mayor?
If I may, I was going to say something after Councilmember Pizzillo commented about the Philineed, but it goes without saying that Mario, who was our chairperson, did an outstanding job. Everyone on, yeah, thank you, everyone on the committee had specific jobs, but Sabrina and Lisa and those girls that, women who went out and actually interviewed folks who applied and ascertained the needs of the community, to those that actually went out and shopped, everyone who donated wrapping paper, and, and they worked all year around to raise money for Philineed. And it's just a wonderful organization project that really shows how the employees care about the citizens in Goodyear. And Mario, you were phenomenal and, and we really want to thank you for keeping us on track and making sure we met the deadlines that you set. So thank you so very much.
Well, and Vice Mayor, thank you for participating and that you seem to do well with the community. You raise money well and you give donations. We appreciate that. Any other comments? All right. So does the city manager have any, I'm seeing interim, anything to report?
Yes, Mayor, I have one item as an update and then I have a couple of follow-ups that I captured during the work session and the meeting tonight that I'd like to recap. So the first is just the city offices will be closed next Monday, January 15th in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. And emergency fire and police services will operate as normal and will not be affected by the closure. And then city offices will reopen Tuesday, the 16th at 8:00 a.m.
Okay, all right.
If you'd like me to go through my follow-up?
Yes, go ahead. Keep going.
During the work session earlier this evening, so we got direction to move forward with the Shred-a-thon program, so we'll, we'll be putting that together. The judge mentioned the e-citation project, so we'll get an update to you probably in this Friday's manager's memo on that project. And then you'd like us to highlight the court services that were mentioned in an upcoming Infocus magazine. And then just now, this discussion on proactive communication strategy on how to engage residents when there's legislative issues we need to make them aware of.
All right. All right, council, do you have any inquiries of staff? Any future items on the agenda? All right. We're going to have a special meeting, but before we do, this is our first meeting of the new year. So Happy New Year to everybody. Happy New Year to staff. Get ready. We've got a lot of work to do this year. We're going to have a lot of opportunities. We have some new employees. It's amazing how many new employees, all those retirees. Well, we've replaced them, some really good people. So council? I want to thank you. Actually, I have to tell you, I missed you during the holidays. I thought I'd never say that, but I actually did. So I just think we work well as a team. I think we, we don't always agree on everything, but somehow we come to the idea, we kind of relax and go with it. So again, thank you. And I can't say how much I'm looking forward to the next session, which is January 22nd will be a work session and a regular meeting. And then the next would be January 29th and the 5th. So we're going to adjourn.